Welcome to the Village Board of Trustees meeting, a special meeting for this evening in regards to the Comprehensive Plan kickoff. Got the roll call, trustee Albert.
President.
Trustee Barone. Corrigan.
President.
Mayor, we didn't hear you. I think you might have announced Soberman, but we didn't hear you.
I'm here, but I may have lost the meeting. Let me see.
No, we see you.
We see you, Fred.
Well, I can't see you, so I'm gonna have to. I have to leave and join.
Magrino present, we have Lisa Ann. Village clerk and myself present. So Max, if you want, take it away.
Well, now we're waiting for Fred again because he had to log off. He somehow lost it.
He'll come back on.
Yep, and I'll keep an eye out for him. There he is, in fact. Promote him. There you go, Fred. Can you see us?
I can. Thank you for waiting.
You're very welcome.
Can we see you? Yeah, we see you. Okay, great.
So, thank you, Mayor, and welcome all to the first meeting of the Suffering Comprehensive Plan. It's a process that you are embarking on tonight that's going to take you the next 12 to 15 months. But once you get through, you'll have a refined idea of where the village is going and how it's gonna get there. I've prepared a agenda for tonight. Can everybody see that?
Yes.
Really small, but I guess if I get really close, I can.
Yeah.
I'm using a phone.
Pardon?
I see you.
Okay.
Will you be able to send that to me after the meeting, please?
Certainly, absolutely. So essentially, as you know, and this is a bit of a second kickoff meeting because we did have an initial meeting to go over some technical items with regard to the RFP to determine how we would be moving forward. So some of this information may have already been dealt with and some of it will be new to you. As I mentioned, the Comprehensive Plan process is a 12 to 15 month process. That really begins with data collection, data analysis, reaching out to the public, doing some visioning exercises to get an idea of initially where you want to go. Using that to develop some goals, objectives, and a vision statement and to then test that vision statement with the public to gather more deep dive public sentiment. Public sentiment and information. And then to refine that into a series of recommendations on how to achieve the village's goals, which will ultimately lead to zoning amendments. It is a work intensive process, but it's definitely worth it. And it really helps to solidify the village's efforts and to coordinate oftentimes many different departments that may be working in different directions to all get on the same page and move toward one target. I believe in our last meeting, we had identified at least tentatively a primary contact for us to work with. In the RFP, it had been the building inspector. I think in our initial pre-kickoff meeting, we had suggested it might be Lisa Ann. Is that correct?
Yeah, I think that would make sense.
Okay.
Yeah.
Building inspector.
Well, the building inspector was identified in the RFP.
Right.
Is that the person that I should be working with directly or?
Actually, I think it should be the board and we wanted Lisa as our contact person for the board.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that makes sense under the circumstances that Lisa Ann should be the one, at least for now.
Okay.
Unless anyone has another suggestion, but.
I don't, but I have a question. It may embarrass me. What does RFP stand for?
Request for Proposals. Those were the. That was the village's request and sort of provided a framework for our response in our proposal and contract. So Lisa, I'll be in touch this week to get some copies of plans and documents. The first of which is the 2010 Plan Downtown Revitalization. We've been working, you know, to gather some information initially. We have run into some difficulty getting some information from the town of Ramapo with regard to the assessment records. That is due to the way they, you know, the software they use to maintain their assessment records, which is different than most communities in New York State. So we're working on that. Bonnie had some ideas that we're gonna follow up with because she just went through this with Hillburn as well. So we are working toward that. We, you know, first order of business is to go through our schedule for the comp plan. We arrived at this date, I believe, to to really get, I think it was trustee Barone to be able to attend, but I guess he wasn't able to.
I think it was trustee Albert.
Oh, it was trustee Albert?
And actually, I'm here only because I'm really, like, I'm supposed to, I'm at work right now and I'm hoping that nothing, nothing I have to deal with comes up. I work at a TV station.
Oh, okay.
So I'm just kind of laying low right now and joining the meeting, but this actually wasn't a good day for me, but it was what was selected, so I did my best.
Okay, is there generally a good day? I mean, I put some ideas here for what works for me. But it's really, you know, it's usually good to have a set day of the month that we're gonna meet. I suggest here, I have the second Monday I put at the end because I really don't have it available, but the conflict that I have on that date is so rare that I go to it. That, you know, most Mondays I would, second Mondays, I would be available. And I think we're in the second, or I guess it's the third or the second Monday right now. So I didn't know if this was generally a day Monday.
This is, right now, this is the third Monday, but I think the proposal from the board was second Monday. It's just that this week, I'm sorry, this month, we skipped the first Monday for our normal meeting because it was the day before Election Day. So I think the idea was that the candidates wanted to be able to get out the vote, you know, so.
Right, right. So second Monday is generally a good date for everybody?
I mean, we can make it work, I guess, you know, as long as we have enough heads up, you know.
Okay.
I guess.
Are there any, are there any dates that would be better? I have here fourth Tuesday, second or fourth Wednesdays, and second or third Thursdays are generally available for me?
Wednesday is a good day for me, whether it's second or fourth, it's a good day.
I think, I think, you know, Monday is the night we have our other meetings anyway. We have like our workshop meetings on Mondays and we have our regular board meetings on Mondays. So I mean, it just seems keeping it on a Monday is at least very regular, you know, regular for the board. What do you, what do you think, Joe?
I'm fine with that if that works for everybody. I know Tuesdays, Rob, you're out of pocket on Tuesdays, correct?
Sorry. Yeah. Every other Tuesday, the second, second and fourth Tuesday usually. But again, we gotta discuss that, you know. But I think second Monday probably makes sense based upon what took place last time, if Max can do that.
That can work. I can make that work. So we'll go with second Monday.
Okay.
And then we have Zoom meetings so far have been extended through January. I'm not sure the exact day in January, if that will cover our second Monday in January. But I think we should be clear where we're gonna meet if those get canceled. Is it generally good to meet at Village Hall?
Yep.
Except it would, six o'clock definitely would never work for me at Village Hall on a Monday. It would have to be seven.
Okay.
I mean, I guess this Zoom thing, I can make that work, but, but but being at Village Hall, there's really no way. I mean, my, my normal shift, I've actually worked till eight, but I can scoop my hours a little bit if my boss approves, you know, but the earliest I can usually get out is around six, so, you know, I'm about an hour away.
Could we have, can we have a Zoom meetings?
Well, he was just saying that you can't, once the governor says you can't anymore.
I see.
Although we don't know what's gonna happen because there is intent to try and get this as something that would be acceptable under, you know, open meetings law, but we don't know where that stands at this point in time. But at this point, things have been extended, but we don't know what's gonna happen after this, you know, next extension lapses.
Yeah, so why don't we keep it Monday as a Zoom meeting, second Monday, and if we're told differently, we'll do differently.
And that differently would be Village Hall. But that would have to be a later meeting, seven or 7:30.
Seven, yeah, seven's fine.
Seven o'clock.
Seven's fine.
Zoom will be kept at six? Is that good?
No.
Yeah. Yes.
Yes, Zoom at 6:00 PM.
Yes.
All right.
And just so everybody's aware, Max is the lead on this. I actually have a meeting conflict on your Mondays, but that's okay. I'm the backup and, you know, I'm working with Max on this. I just may not be able to make the meetings. I'll try when I can.
Well, does that create an issue?
That, that, I should be available. I can, I can move my conflict. I can assign somebody to cover that for me if necessary, so. Except in terms of illness. You know, the second Monday should be fine.
But what about for Bonnie?
For Bonnie, it's not great. Right? She has, she has a conflict, so unless, is that, is that a pretty steady community that's usually tonight, Bonnie?
That's Montgomery. Yeah.
Bonnie, is that the second Monday that's always that you're busy? How about the third Monday?
It's the second and, so normally I would have had it last week, not this week, so it's the second and fourth and the third, normally I don't have anything.
So why don't we just make it the third Monday then?
Yeah, I agree with that.
Sounds good.
Get the full team on this. Absolutely.
Okay, third Monday.
Sorry.
Thanks.
Wow, we really.
I'm sorry, it's just.
We really went around the mulberry bush on that one.
I can work with third Monday to make it easy.
All right, very good.
Okay.
And today happens to be a third Monday, so it's fine.
See, we're already consistent.
There you go.
Monday seems to be a good day for meetings. A lot of the, a lot of the communities in the counties do Monday meetings, so.
Yes, I don't know why people are so attracted to a Monday meeting. Isn't that the last thing everybody wants to do?
I think people are still fresh on a Monday and they're willing to do a meeting, but like by Friday, nobody wants to do anything.
Well, I would not suggest a Friday by any means, but, you know.
You know, we just, not that we're doing that, but we've had situations where we've had to meet on Saturday mornings because literally we could not find dates for everybody and they could only meet on a weekend. So we do what we have to do. But it's really, you know, your schedules, especially that are important.
So the first major action or event that will be held under the schedule is our first public workshop, which is a workshop for visioning. Generally, what we do is we prepare some background information. We've already been working, Scott Newhart, who is on this call also as an attendee, is assigned to this. He's been working on some demographics analysis. So we've already sort of put together some information that we will be presenting to you all on demographics in the community. I'm just breathing through this on purpose because it's not on the agenda tonight. I just wanna show you the type of information we're assembling for you to look at. We've also already started coming, trying to get some mapping together for the community. As I mentioned, we're having some difficulty working with the town to get land use information. We're gonna try and get some workarounds, but there's all sorts of other mapping that we're gonna be preparing. And these types of these types of data are gonna be the basis for a visioning meeting that we'll either have in December or January. That's really a choice that you can make. If we do it in January, we'll have more to present in advance of the public workshop. If we do it in December, we still may be trying to work through some of the difficulties we've been having and getting some data mapping together. Generally, you know, we have, but.
Max, when you say that, right away I vote for January, when you have more information for us.
Okay, I mean, it's, it is probably better to go in January, I would say. Have a more complete, and then I think also in terms of the holidays, Hanukkah is early this year. So you could do like second week of December. But people still, you know, they don't like coming out in December. Just, there's too many things going on, people are shopping, people are making plans for the holidays, so. That would.
December is a tough month.
Yeah, and, and we could probably, if we do it in January, we could do a preparation meeting in December to go over the format and what that's gonna look like. And then we can have it this third Monday in January rather than have a separate date, if that makes sense for everybody.
That would be great.
Yeah.
Okay. After that, the second event will be the second workshop where we go to the public for, with a preliminary vision. I'm gonna suggest that happen two months after our visioning meeting. That way, we can talk about a draft vision, a draft goals in February and then have our second follow-up public meeting in March. That would usually also be when we opened up our survey. So we'll be wanting to be working on the survey to follow up from that visioning meeting. And then following that, once we have some public feedback at the second workshop and we can look through the survey for comments that have been submitted already, I think we can start discussing having a topical workshop either the following month in April or May. And that really would be if, if the village board felt like we needed to do some more preparation and wanted to go through some of the possibilities that we could do at the topical workshop, we could push that to May. But, but generally, those are the timeframes that we're looking for. One option that we, we put into our proposal was a pop-up event. And we discussed maybe having a tent at one of the street fairs or some other community event, maybe in the springtime. Is that something of interest to the, to the board?
Sounds good to me.
Sure.
I have a question.
We actually, I was gonna say, we, so just for the pop-up tent, we actually did it pretty early on in town of Poughkeepsie where we were doing a comp plan. It was really cold. It was December. But they had something called the eggnog crawl, which is what they did before the holidays. So I don't know if you have any venues coming up that happen to be not in the springtime. But in essence, it'd be good to know when you think there's gonna be a street fair or some major event that the village supports because that's when that could be held. So, you know, obviously the weather's better in spring, sometimes more people come out. But just wanna throw it out there because some people actually do have winter events.
We, we do have a Christmas parade, you know, in a few weeks, but I mean, I think it's cold. I mean, I don't think people are gonna wanna talk to anyone.
And I think, I think if you have something in the spring, if you're doing something in the spring already scheduled, you'll have enough work under your, you know, miles under your feet where you can go to the public with some exercises. For example, when we, when we did the pop-up in Village of Haverstraw, they wanted a map to identify where everybody who was going to their food crawl was coming from. And that was pretty interesting. We actually had a, a map of maybe like the seven county areas surrounding Rockland. And we had people coming from far beyond that, interestingly enough. But, you know, you might have some other questions that you want to pose to the public, you know, about, you know, just spitballing, again, some of the things we didn't have at Haverstraw. What, where would the route of a loop bus be, right? Or you know, what, what do you feel, you know, for the children that attended? You know, what, what specifically are you looking for in the community in terms of recreation and fun and activities? You know, we sort of tailored it because we had some experience before we did the pop-up event. So when is, when is your first spring event? Do you have anything scheduled at this point?
I think our street fair is usually in June.
The first one's in June?
I believe so.
Yeah, and that can still work.
They also do a pretty big Easter event. That's in April, obviously.
There is an Easter event?
Yes.
That's a religious type holiday and you're thinking on that. I think that you should have a standalone event where you swell up, drum up enough interest from the village residents and, and the business owners to bring them into Village Hall and to then get those ideas and that information.
And that, that's going to be the first and second workshops, so, and the third one. So we're having three workshops that are just for the comp plan. The pop-up event is meant to be something that sort of occurs outside of that. But, yeah, we are having three events just for the comp plan. And that's really goes to the next item on our agenda here, which is public notice. We try and have a robust advertising schedule. We usually do news releases to the local papers. But on top of that, you know, obviously posting on the village website NPV, our company can do a social media blast. Typically, do you have existing means for getting the word out for, for village events?
Yes, we have a, we have a news, a weekly newsletter that goes out. We have a Constant Contact page and we have the Facebook page and we have our website.
Constant Contact. That's an email blast, right? And then webpage and Facebook.
Is the newsletter a digital? Or it's not, is it, or is it published? It's digital?
It's email, email.
And you guys, you guys have a water department, right?
Yes.
You send out water bills?
Yes.
Is that a quarterly?
Every seven, six months. No, it's six months, six months. In fact, the bill just went out in November. I just paid mine today, as it turns out. It's November, it goes out in November and May.
Okay, so it's probably not gonna be timed right for us, but maybe at least for the pop-up event, we could put, we could put a notice in there.
Are there any other bills or notices that go out beyond the water bills?
There's a tax bill that goes out late May, early June. Right?
So another, another way that we've been, been using at least in two of my recent plans is we've printed postcards. They're pretty cheap. You can do, you know, 1,000 or 2,000 postcards, have a nice design on the front that, that has the dates of the workshops. And you can actually drop stacks of them all throughout the village, you know, in the shops that you go to, have a stack at the library, have a stack at the Village Hall, bring them to places of worship, bring them, you know, wherever, institutions, any, any community organization you can give a stack to. And that, that seems to be a good way to get the word out that, that the process is underway. Is that something that would be of interest? I mean, I think it's a nominal charge to do like 2,000 postcards or something like that.
Sounds good to me.
Is there, is there a printer that the village usually likes to work with?
Probably use someone local right here in the village, but.
Yeah, you used to have Minuteman there. Do you have somebody else now?
There's two, there's two printers, there's two printers in the village. There's, there's PostNet.
And Greenlee.
Post, PostNet and Greenlee for both in the village.
Okay.
And to our, our DPW Street Department, they have a print shop that will be able to do, if we ask them kindly and nicely, perhaps they could help us with some sign signs and whatnot.
Okay.
And banners. Of course, we'll have to ask nicely.
Very good.
And if I may just go back up to the survey. How does, how does the survey actually get processed out to the community?
So typically, we were, we use the Survey Monkey platform. And what we do is we draft the survey in the online platform and we print out paper versions of that platform, which can get a little bit bulky because a lot of times when we answer, ask some of these questions, we'll put graphical examples of, you know, especially if we're talking about, for example, what housing type would you like to see? What type of commercial would you like to see? Oftentimes, we'll include images with those. That can get a little bit, you know, heavy when you try and print that out. But we do feel it is important to have.
The website and say, click here if you'd like to do the survey.
Yeah, it's always linked to the, to the, to the village website.
We try and, and we really wanna get as many people to Survey Monkey because then the way the data is collected, we can do analyses with it. You know, if it's paper copies, someone needs to enter them, you know, into the system.
Absolutely.
We can definitely do it. And, you know, as Max was saying, we feel it's very important because there just may be senior households. There may be individuals who are not comfortable doing surveys online, so we want the ability to do that. We typically drop them off at the library, just at places where they may pick it up. You know, ultimately, we'll decide who you want to take, you know, the surveys. We've done it where it's open to anyone, but one of the questions is, are you a resident? Are you an employee? Are you a business? Um, you know, we like to sometimes get input from outsiders to get a sense of what is, you know, their. Um, sense of of suffering um as well. Uh, but we have done surveys where it was just expressly limited to people who actually had property and lived in the village. And we had to be able to circulate um numbers. They they had to be able to access it. Um, because you couldn't just enter Survey Monkey. You had to provide a code to be able to get into it so that there was some control over it. So that's a matter of preference. Um, that's really the exception to rule. Most of our co- our communities. Do uh, you know, want it to be broadly open, but allow people to say where they're from, you know, what's the context of their. Um, involvement in the village. Uh, and and frankly, we can see if people are kinda messing around with the data. You know, if we see a lot of IP addresses, you know, if there's like five responses all from the same IP address. You know, we may check it out to see if it's just someone trying to load up on responses. But frankly, we haven't had, I haven't had that issue. I don't know if you did, Max.
We did. We actually had a lot of issues with the Chestnut Ridge Comp Plan. Um, a lot of people uh taking surveys that were nowhere near the area. Um, we had uh, you know, multiple surveys that that we had surveys. Where the app, you know, we did a timed, we do a timed run on the survey. And we figured a reasonable amount of time to fill out the survey was twenty minutes. And there were a bunch of surveys that had been filled out fully in like four. And the only way you're doing that is if you're not reading the survey. Um, because you've already taken it.
So you you delete those results?
Uh, we categorize them and then we ask the, in this case, we would ask you all what you, how you wanted to deal with that information.
Right. I think it it might be good also to have, like, people should put their address. In their survey so that we can dope out whether they're really residents of the village. Because a lot of people think they live in the village of Suffolk, but actually they leave, they live in the greater Suffolk area, but not in Suffolk.
Right.
So so that, so you can do that. Sometimes it's good to say what street you live on, only because. Pe- people will start to shy away from doing surveys if they feel like their personal information.
Right.
You know, or if you're gonna somehow pick on them because you happen to know their address.
Well, I guess this the street name is fine. We don't need their street number. But that this way, you know, if someone puts, I I don't know, I'm just gonna pick up. Street Airmont Road, you know, they're not in Suffolk, you know, because Airmont Road isn't in Suffolk.
Well, it's it is because it's got the same zip code. It's it's not in the village.
Right, but it's not, it's not part of the village. They don't pay attention to the village.
And that's a good point.
A lot of people think.
Especially renters.
Well, and and, you know, we have a one oh nine oh one address. So, you know, a lot of people think they're actually in Suffolk and that live in a neighboring village. Um, they may just not understand that they're not part of the actual village of Suffolk. We've also provided maps um and kinda just said, what air, what neighborhood do you live in? And they were, um, you know. They were informational enough that people could figure out whether they live there or not.
Oh, that's even, that's even more anonymity. Yeah.
Yeah.
That's fine. I'm fine with that. I just wanna make sure we include the people that live in the village, but not the people that think they live in Suffolk and don't.
Yeah, yeah. And they can respond, but it's just ma- you know, then you know who it. Then you can take the results and say, okay, of the residents of the village of Suffolk. These were their responses as opposed to the pool, you know, of all the people who responded.
Right. And and usually, you know, you may have, you may be a Suffolk person and not live in Suffolk. So especially a place like Suffolk that has such a a large business district. Will have a lot of people who identify with the the community that don't live here. So, you know, we we will have a. A qualifying question for those people to, you know, sort of. Understand how they relate to the community because they won't all be residents.
Right, and I don't think we should discount them. I think their opinion is important because they're almost outsiders. Looking in.
Exactly. They can give you a different perspective, for sure.
Yes.
Is there, um, from your perspective, in Haverstraw, this was something um that was necessary given their population. They had a a large Spanish speaking base. And so at the point where we are ready to go out for surveys or even public participation. Um, it'd be good to know if there are any particular populations where you think that it'd be useful to. Be able to translate some of the information or just um. Figure out how to get additional input from them, especially if they're not. If they're, if they're part of the community, but they don't tend to go to events because of some limitation. Um, so just think about that. We don't have to solve it tonight, but, you know, again, it gets to. You know, input from your resident population.
Right. Yeah. Yeah, we have a couple of um churches and that can help us and and uh. A few, a few businesses that would be probably very helpful with that.
Great.
Okay.
If you hear me clicking, I'm taking notes.
Yeah, me too. Sorry. So um, the next item was was with regard to public outreach. It's a good segue. Um, we like to early on get sort of a list of organizations uh that you feel. Need to be interviewed or consulted or reached out to. With regard to, you know, this outreach effort. Um, you know, do you have any uh organizations, uh, you know? We almost, you know, reflexively will do the Chamber of Commerce. Um. You know, we'll do uh the places of worship in the communities. Are there any other uh organizations? Uh, that merit a a sort of um direct contact?
Yeah, that have a good sized population base that you think we should be reaching out to. Clubs.
I mean, the Salvation Army, right, is is in Suffolk. Is that? I know they're they're religious, but um it the, you know, it's not a church. It's not a, it's an organization.
Um. I don't think they have any special uh information about our community. The the organization that does have some special information might be the Chamber of Commerce.
Yep, we we will go to the Chamber of Commerce. Usually will will contact uh most of the places of worship, those those we like to do almost automatically.
All right, so we we have an opportunity to think about that, right?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, we ultimately wanna develop a list of stakeholders you'd like us to reach out to. For, you know, any of the workshops or events, or even if you think there is a group that we should independently interview. Um, because they're of importance, uh, we've done that. Um, you know, Carmel, most of the communities will have a. Set up a separate Zoom meeting to talk to the chamber. You know, what do they think are opportunities um within the community, et cetera?
You you mentioned places of of worship. I I know uh in the case of of the Jewish faith is the the. The closest synagogue to Suffolk is actually in Mawa, New Jersey, just across the border. It's on.
That used to be in Suffolk, right?
It used to be. They moved or they merged actually with a with another temple.
My former partner, Stu Turner, I think was a member when it was the Suffolk Reform Temple, right?
Yeah.
Believe. And now it's Beth.
Beth Habeirim Sher Shalom. Yeah, Habeirim Sher Shalom. But they're in, they're on two oh two in Mawa, actually. But they, you know, they they have members from all over the area, you know, both Bergen County and Rockland County.
I mean, if it still identifies itself as as a institution with roots, there's nothing wrong with reaching out to them. Uh, to see if they would be interested. Yeah.
I just wanted to mention that.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Yeah.
But doesn't make, would it make sense to go to the town of Ramapo trustees with that board to see what they? How they feel about Suffolk?
That that would be up to you.
For their ideas.
But.
Yeah, you know, they're the um larger governing body. They certainly get a lot of input about our village.
I mean, that land use stuff.
That is, that is something certainly we could do. Um, we could reach out to them uh and and ask them. If they would like to or invite them to participate in a conversation with the village board. Um, I think that would probably be something where the village should engage them directly. Rather than sort of through us. Um, only because, you know, it is an elected board. Meeting with another elected board.
And that goes under the outreach, so that's that we can come back to you with ideas.
Yeah, and and you might be able to get a lot of that from meeting with the supervisor, if if that's somebody you wanted to meet with, so.
The, I think the other group, and we're giving you ideas as you develop the list, as you think about it. Um, the other are um large land holdings, you know, Avon. Um, uh, you know, any of the larger.
Quarry. Yeah, whoever is.
You know. Uh, the former pharmaceutical, um, what is, what was it at the end? Not Novartis.
Yeah, that was.
Wasn't. Was it wasn't the artist, but I, yeah.
So, you know, that's sitting there. Um, you know, it's split between two communities, but a good chunk of it's in the village, so. You know, tho- those are the kind of commu- those are some of the people you might also want us to reach out to who are considered stakeholders.
Right. You 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 mentioned the the, you mentioned Ramapo government. Just to throw it out there, the current town supervisor of Ramapo happens to live in the village of Suffolk.
Oh, okay.
Michael Specht. Michael Specht lives in Suffolk. I think he is the only member of the council, the town council that lives in Suffolk, but he does live in Suffolk.
Okay. Yeah, and and you don't have to to okay this list, um, but we can start piecing it together. Um, and and maybe talk about it again in December a- as a follow up.
Okay, that sounds like a good plan.
You know, you have.
Even or even perhaps get us, um, you know. You could send us email us who you think should be part of it, so by December, we have sort of a a draft list that you can all take a look at.
Sounds good.
Uh, a lot of times, communities will have, um, getting back to the Spanish language. A lot of um communities will have Spanish language organizations that also can. Uh, be a good um conduit for population that might not otherwise. Uh, be able to participate in the planning exercises or be uncomfortable doing so, so. Um, I'm sure you have some of those. Um, I don't know if you have a a Lions or I I'm pretty sure you have a Rotary.
Yes, we do. And we also have VFW.
Yep, VFW Knights of Columbus. Um.
Yep.
Absolutely, American Legion. So we can start piecing that together.
Yeah, you could just include the the senior citizens clubs that we have here.
Mm-hmm. Right.
You, we have an American Legion. And we have a a great population down in the village that we'll be able to use too in in Spanish speaking.
Okay.
Yeah, we have all that.
Okay. So the the next subject is is something that sort of like a fun exercise. Um, we like to, so this doesn't become a a really dry book that sits on the shelf. And to gather, uh, generate some some interest, we like to come up with sort of a a branding exercise early on. Where we try and develop a logo and we we try and and have a. Um, sort of a focus to the the planning effort. In Haverstraw, we had Haverstraw Adelante. Um, in Montgomery, we had Vision twenty twenty. Um, there was uh. Other other examples of of communities, but I went onto your website and looked at sort of where. And I could, I could try and find if there was any.
I I have to jump off this meeting for a couple of minutes.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. I'll I'll be watching for you uh to come back.
I I'll listen. I'll keep listening, but I I've got, I can't really.
Okay.
Yes, I'll stop my video.
Great. So, um, the first is is your your logo, your your village logo, Tien Zala Verite. Uh, which is French for care about the truth. That looks like it might have been a little bit older. Um. We have.
Whenever the village is founded.
We have uh, we have the website heading, the landing page, great things are happening in Suffolk. Um, that that I thought was was frankly, um, pretty good. Um, you know, sort of, sort of generates excitement. Uh, all roads lead to Suffolk uh is is sort of also the landing page. It's it's the subtitle under the village of Suffolk. Um, and then just looking at sort of some of the themes. Uh, it seemed like downtown vitality was was important sort of in the imagery. Uh, there was a lot of statements about pedestrian friendliness and walkability and livability. Um, there was a lot of uh focus on inclusivity, talking about women's groups and and African American groups. Uh, and there was some highlights of of the recent TOD project. Uh, that went in across from the train station. Um, so just sort of, I'm trying to understand where you all see the brand of Suffolk and. And the image of Suffolk and where you think excitement could be generated is. Do you all have any input? Or ideas?
Well, to me, uh, Suffolk is very much like Nyack. Nyack is a very comfortable ta- town to walk in. And we hope Suffolk will be the same way as Nyack. Uh. We would, w- we really don't wanna lose that little little old town feeling that we presently have. On the other hand, there's a number of uh ideas about big buildings being built. Whether on Lafayette Avenue or near it, like at at the Avon property. So, you know, we on the board are very, uh, we need guidance on that.
So it's 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 sort of the balance of. Of. I I'm gonna, I guess, a lot of communities object to the term urban, right? But when you talk about it at a village scale, it doesn't necessarily need to be a dirty word. Um, you know, you are a center of the community. Suffolk is definitely a center of community. If you look at. You know, the old uh town of Ramapo Comp Plan. Not the most recent two, but but the ones going back into the nineties or eighties. It talks about how really Suffolk, Spring Valley. Um. And uh. Think there may have been one other that was identified sort of as the downtowns of of the community or or the community centers. For the town of Ramapo. Um. And so, you know, it it is, it is appropriate for it to be a center of. Uh, town life, uh, if if you will. And and in that respect, I I can see the balancing between, you know, modern. Uh, living, which which is typically in in higher density buildings. Uh, and and maintaining the old town feel.
You have like, you have on the outskirts, it gets a little bit rural, kind of that feel as you go out toward Montebello. Um, and you have suburban neighborhoods, you know, that that expanded, you know, out toward Bonner. And then you have the village center where you have the quintessential village houses, you know, that were almost like a, you know, a work town. Um, you know, community with the gridded network.
Yeah, and you actually have the, you have.
And then you have a, you have a true downtown. You have a true downtown.
Actually do have the old Ford work town, right, on um.
Once upon a time, that's right.
That back off of Chestnut, you know, as it on the other side of the railroad tracks there.
Yeah, there were, well, the foundries also, you know, if we talk historical.
And the brake shoe place.
I always like the, I was like, um, I like branding in this kind of a community where you have so much going on, you know. Something for every everyone, you know, there's something for everyone, uh, you know. There's so many different environments that you can live in. Uh, there's so many different environments. Sorry? You're you're muted for some reason.
I was just saying, can you hear me? I was just saying, that's why I like the all roads lead to Suffolk, so it doesn't matter if it has present, future. Any, you know, any way you look at it, we encompass everything.
Yeah, I like that one too.
So how about if we do something along the lines of all roads lead to Suffolk, back to the future?
That's right.
Back to the future. That that's, you know, I know it's uh beyond the movie. It's it's actually, you know, a. That, that's, you know, I know it's, uh, beyond the movie, it's, it's actually, you know, a very apt description of what Fred was talking about, right? The charm of, of little old Suffolk and what it was historically. Um, and the future and, and what that, what that brings in terms of quality housing and, and newer, uh, places to live and, and sort of how did it two join?
Yeah, we could come up with something that talks about, you know, history meets, you know, progress, there's all kinds of things that you could talk about back to the future, you know.
Have you guys ever been to Ramsey?
Sure.
Oh, yeah.
So, I know Fred mentioned Nyack, we're never gonna be Nyack and we have to stop thinking we're gonna be Nyack, we don't have a river. We don't have it. So, one of the.
Wait a minute, you have the Mawa on the Ramapo.
Talk about that, okay? Not a shining moment. Uh, it is when we don't have a lot of rain by shore. You know, that little creek can become such a, a worrisome.
Oh, yeah.
A worrisome little devil that thing can be. Um. You know, so I think that, uh, what Ramsey pulls off is amazing. And I have to say, when, you know, I walk my dog, oh, I, I'm from, I'm literally live right behind Ace Hardware. So, I'm walking my dog in the village downtown all the time. And Ramsey, if someone steps off the curb, car stop. Here, if I step off the car, uh, I step off the curb, say Novena and just pray you get across the street before somebody beeps their horn and scares crap out of them. You know, so, um, their mindset is so much different. And the way that the stores are decorated and the way that, you know, just all the store owners, like you can see them talking to each other, you know, that's you know, that would be something I would love to see, you know, I, I, you know, the big joke is that, you know, we live in Mayberry. You know, Suffolk's Mayberry, just because everyone's so close and everyone, and we're a very, very small town. And that's so important, you know?
Uh-huh. Well, that's always, you know, one of the exercises we did in one of the communities was, you know, also, if you can think of a community that, you know, you want to be Suffolk because you love Suffolk and it's unique and it's your home. But, you know, if you could picture a community that you like, you know, the bones and the structure and you say, you know, if we went in that direction, it would make Suffolk even better. So, you know, you mentioned Ramsey, you know, if there are other communities, you, you say, wow, you know, and even Fred saying Nyack, I think, you know, while we're not on the river, you're talking about the walkability and the mixed use.
Right.
And still having, again, just like you do, the suburban areas, you have the outlawing areas of the village that aren't, you know, so you, you've got both, and, and that's kind of what Nyack's about too, and, and I think Ramsey's the same thing. Ramsey doesn't necessarily have a lot of the mixed use development in the middle of the downtown. But they definitely, and they're smaller scale than you are for sure. You know, they have a, they have kind of one-story strips and then they get a couple of two-family, or sorry, two-story. But you guys are solidly in the two before now, you know, with some of the newer development and, and higher. So you're definitely, you know, and, and using that word for lack of a better word, more urbanized, not that you're urban. And that's actually an important, that, that's important, and when we get surveys, you know, sometimes we do a little bit of a design, a visual preference survey. Sometimes people don't know what they want, so if you say, do you want multifamily, you know, or do you want um, certain uses, they may respond in a different way than if they see a picture of what you envision. And, you know, you can show them a three-story building and they may say, that's great, that's, that's a good look for downtown Suffolk. But if you show them a six-story building, they may be like, no way, you know, that's beyond where we really want to go. So, y- you know, your community and the heart of it is definitely influenced by the scale and the density. And whereas, you know, you know, saying words like we want to be twelve units to the acre versus fourteen units to the acre, that doesn't mean anything. Showing them pictures of buildings, that means something to them.
Right.
So I think that can be done as part of a survey. But that's, you know, that's where we're try- that's what we're trying to do, you know, Nyack is more your scale, for sure, as far as buildings. Um, you know, they again have the more quintessential downtown, um, environment. Um, frankly, Ridgewood is more your scale.
Yeah.
Although they have a, they have broader, I think, uh, you know, boulevard downtown area.
I was actually thinking more Westwood, in fact, you know.
Westwood.
True, true, Westwood, yep.
In terms of, of the way the streetscape is, right, and you have the buildings right on the street and, uh, and tall, so. And, and you have a lot of.
Jersey girl, so I, I know exactly where you're going.
Yep, yep.
Well, I grew up part of my life, um, in Mawa.
Okay.
So, so we know this area well.
Yeah, I'm in, I was in Oakland and Allen.
Yeah.
Allendale and part-time Pennsylvania, so I really know the country too.
Yeah, yeah. Maywood and Mawa.
So it, it seems like, uh, all, all roads lead to, to Suffolk, back to the future. Mayberry evoking small town, evoking inclusivity.
Mayberry might insult people, I was just.
No, I'm not, I'm not saying use the word, but I'm trying to.
My catchphrase, because I happen to like the show, but that's just me. You know?
Yeah, yeah. No, I, I just want to try and like, you know, I'll, we'll, we'll work on something here, and I challenge everybody there, if you have some ideas for branding.
Their taglines.
Taglines, logos, if you want to put, put something pen to paper, doesn't have to be well-developed, love to see ideas. Certainly we'll do some, some exercises here, that it's fun. We like sort of starting out on that foot and, and get everybody to talk about what they like and what they don't like and generate some ideas and and it, it's sort of planning on, on a microcosm, coming up with a logo or coming up with, with the, a tagline. And then that can get on postcards and that can get on announcements and, and, you know, it can become something that the community identifies with a- as we're going through the process. So, um, the next item here is, uh, oh, you know, I, I guess this is kind of a, a, a good time or place to ask how some of the recent projects have been received by the public. I know they can be mixed, uh, they can be controversial, is there any sort of thoughts on, on, you know, the obviously, the, the big item is, is the TOD development. Um, which is, is so, so transformational to the village. Um, do you all have any thoughts on it or initial like ideas about how it's been received?
Well, I, I'd like to ask the mayor or, or the other trustees, because I haven't heard about the feedback of the Sheldon, but we created a very pretty building on, uh, called the Sheldon, and, um, it's outside the, the downtown, you know, that, it's outside of Lafayette Avenue, it's, it's on Franklin.
Yeah.
Turnpike. And.
Well, it's actually an Orange Avenue, Orange Avenue.
Okay, thank you, and I would like to hear other people, what the feedback you've gotten about that big building, which to me looks very attractive, I think it's a plus for Suffolk.
Well, there, there, there's a long history with that, uh, building.
I'll be honest, Joe, just, just spit it out.
Um, I think that it's a great project, I was definitely in favor of it, took a lot of heat for it, um. Although unfortunately, some of the plans that were initially supposed to happen with that building never came to fruition, such as the parking got, got knocked down to lesser, and now we have, we now have a bigger parking problem. Parking is a serious issue in the village.
Okay.
You know, um, there were some other things that I, I really don't have the details on. Um, it's a great project, that the contractors and the, the building owners are phenomenal people. They've been in the village of Suffolk forever, they're upstanding. Um, they build a great project and they know how to do it. You know, uh, they, they, they know what they're doing. Um, so it was a pleasure to work with them on that. Um, you know, I'm, for my taste, I like things to look a little bit older, that's why I have a house that was built in eighteen eighty like a crazy person. Um, but you know, it, I don't, I think it was one of the best projects that really changed the look of what that area was. It wa- was pretty historical buildings, but sometimes historical buildings just can't be saved. You know, uh.
And I, I think it also.
Apparently it had been rebooted previously and the lens did not take, it needed, the lens needed rebooting separately.
Be that, thank you very much.
So, you know. Great project for our village, uh, the, you know, the Goldsteins are amazing with what they do with a piece of property, and there was no saving the old buildings, unfortunately.
What'd you say, there was no saving what?
The older buildings that were there.
That were there, yeah.
That project was a long time in the making, because that was around even when I was a planner, many, many months ago. Yeah, so that's, that's been something that's been on the radar for a very, very long time.
That was the used tire shop in that location?
No, that was, that was a regular older. That was a part of it, it was multiple properties, I think.
Yeah, it was.
Yeah, it was multiple properties.
And, um, one of them, what was, um, turned out to be at the end of the day, um, unfortunately, one of the greatest places in Suffolk way back in the day. Um, and it just turned out to be a boarding house, they didn't have hot water, they didn't have heat, but you know.
Yeah.
Business after business tried, but, you know.
Okay.
Steve and, and Ed, Ed, do you have any feedback to give us about how people felt about the Sheldon?
Believe every, most, most people in the village, um, admire the Sheldon, they think it brought a lot of, um, good to the village of Suffolk.
Yeah.
It, it, it got rid of a blighted area, it got rid of a brown field. It generated, uh, additional, at least ninety-two residents here in the village into the central business district. It increased, uh, walkability, increased, uh, economic growth for the businesses in downtown, and that's what we need to do.
Yeah. That's, that's very helpful, thank you.
Yeah, if we could have, if we could have the Goldsteins do all projects, that'd be great.
There are other people out there that are willing to do projects.
Yes, I understand that, I, I was just, you know, I have a favorite spot for the Goldsteins on their great work. I'm not disrespecting anyone else.
You feel, so, you know, and I think that that one, because of where it was located, really was important, because it's really attached to the fabric of the downtown. It is right off of Lafayette and it's on Orange Ave, it's, it's what you see and it's across from the train station. So, which obviously makes it transit oriented. You've had some other multifamily projects um, that are not there, they're over by, you know, kind of the central parking lot. They're over by, you know, the railroad. Yeah, Chestnut Street area. Would you say they've, they have also enhanced, do you think their their connectivity to the village and its streetscape, would you say it's the same, or do you think um, the Sheldon better matches the fabric of the village? Or do you think they, they all are pretty good as far as what's been developed?
All are pretty good, I mean, the locations are different, but the che- uh, over on Chestnut Street, um, you focal to Lafayette Avenue. So I, I still think, and, and the one on Cross Street, um, the feedback on those units and walkability is right there, right in the village. And if it's, it's similar to designing what's what I look at is Saratoga, Saratoga, how they have that fine downtown main street and then surrounding it has all of their, uh, residential units. And that really works.
Yeah. Yeah, to me, those buildings on Cross Street and Chestnut look very attractive, and I, my common sense says they've got to have helped the village, because they're within walking distance of Lafayette Avenue. So, you know, stuff like that really enhances our village, especially the downtown.
Yeah. That's, that's great. So, um, I think about, uh, the, the next issue of sort of dry technical issues that we, we need to go through, um, we already talked about, uh, some of the difficulties we're having with the mapping. But we're working through them. Uh, Lisa and, um, if you could get me the twenty-ten downtown plan. Um, and if you can think of any other plans, uh, that you think are, are relevant or should be looked at, we typically will look at the town of Ramapo plan and the, and the Rockland County plan. Um, you know, to make sure that, that we understand what those plans recommend for the area. Um, but beyond those two, if, if there's anything you all think is relevant for us to consider. We also look at the Mid Hudson Sustainability Plan, uh, which is a much broader, uh, level.
Um, and look, uh, look at the surrounding community plans to see what they might have planned on your borders.
Yeah, Bonnie's got a head start in Hillburn, I got a head start in Montebello since we wrote those two. But we'll look at Mawa. And Airmont, we, we have a head start in Airmont too, right, so. Um, but we'll look at Mawa and, and certainly town of Ramapo, um, make sure we understand those plans. But if you have anything else that you can think of, um, reports or plans, um, that you've all used, uh, to sort of guide policy. Um, you know, that'd be great.
Or, or just, yeah, or just research, so if you had brownfield studies, if you had, you know, water supply, if there's improvements that we should be aware of, you know, whatever big studies have been conducted since the last go-around, we should be aware of.
I saw something on the website, uh, with regard to Delaware engineering, I think in the sewer. Um. If, if, uh, I don't know if that's linked on the website, but if it's not, if we could get a copy of that.
Yeah, I was, I'm, I'm sorry, Max, I was gonna jump in and say, you know, Lisa and, uh, maybe, uh, Charles and, uh, Steve, uh, will be good resources for that stuff, and I have, uh, I was just checking while we while you were speaking, I have some, uh, older plans that I'll email to you guys. Um, for whatever they're worth, you know, it's up to you, uh, some of them are, are quite old, but at least it's something, you know.
Is there an adopted comp plan already for the?
That's a very good question, the short answer is, if there is, we can't seem to find it, but um, I do have some, uh, you know, as part of the RFP, uh, I was able to gather a few different, uh, plans that have been, and have been done, I think you mentioned the one from two thousand ten.
Yeah.
I have that.
That was the one that was in the RFP, right?
Yeah, so, uh, whatever I can find, I'll, uh, I'll send to you guys.
Yeah, okay. And then, uh, the other thing is, um, you know, we'll be starting up with staff interviews, uh, soon. Uh, so, you know, we definitely are going to be talking about parking, our um, associated, uh, traffic engineer is, is getting going with the parking and traffic studies, uh, and work that, that was part of this. Um, but we'd like to definitely, if you have a, a parking authority or somebody that sort of deals with parking on a day-to-day, um, love to talk to that person. Um, recreation also, and, uh, and if you have anybody at, at the village that does economic development, I know we have Chamber and Rotary and and a bunch of economic development interests, but if somebody's handling it on behalf of the village as a department, that would be great. Nope. So if, if, uh, do you have any names for those, uh, three areas, and are there any other departments that you think really need to be interviewed early on here?
W- one other possible department would be, would be the, um, the, uh, planning, the planning board, which really controls the zoning in Suffolk.
That's great, Fred, planning board, recreation.
Yeah.
Intendant.
Lisa and Kathy, Kathy Mills is the director, the director of Recreation Board.
Yeah.
I feel included the zoning as well, because they have an insight of what people have been wanting to do with their properties as well.
Yeah, we.
And the variances they might need.
Correct.
On board. We, yeah, we have, we have a zoning board of appeals board.
I think for economic development, the closest organization to reach out to, I think, would be the Chamber of Commerce. Because I don't think we have any other, you know, we have a person who, who looks for grants and, um.
Actually, Fred Rela is not a bad idea, Fred.
Yeah, Fred Rela.
And as for, uh, economic development, I was gonna say the, uh, yeah, the Chamber of Commerce is the only that I can think of. Organization that would specifically be aimed at that topic.
Okay, yep.
And as, as for parking, as I understand it, the present parking, uh, director no longer exists, but if you can get this, if Lisa Ann could send you the name of the previous parking administrator or officer, you know, you can speak to that person about what they think about the parking situation.
Well, that would be Bobby Conklin, right, Ed?
And we have a new one, yes. By the time that.
He's not that well versed in speaking.
Not yet.
I, I, I know the, uh, parking, we used to have a separate parking authority, but now it falls under the police for ma- managing that now.
Okay.
Well, yeah, the police department is certainly good to talk to about parking because they encounter those problems daily. So they know about our parking problems in Suffolk.
Can we quickly go back? You, you had said there was a parking problem after Sheldon was built. There weren't enough parking spaces included in the garage. Is that what happened?
Yeah, so, um, we had, we had asked for, originally there was supposed to be, um, two per unit and it got knocked down and I think it's one point five or one point two-five.
I think it's one point two-five and that's definitely not enough.
It's not enough. They're very rare in this village. Are you going to have one car per family?
Yeah, it's one point five and I think one point two-five has to be on site. So there's a provision that, or, or something to that effect. I'll have to look, but there's a, uh, they have to purchase, um, uh, parking passes for, for village lots, but it's a, you know, it's definitely an issue for, for future TOD. Development.
You know, even Park Avenue Apartments here that are, um, right across the street from Chase Bank. I believe they only have one and one per unit, even if it's a two-bedroom unit. And, um, there's, they, they park anywhere they can.
Is that the towers there? The towers?
You might, you might call towers.
Um, Park Avenue is across from, uh, Chase Bank.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, back by where Crumbs used to be.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. The six-story brick building.
That's another, that's another horrible parking situation.
So I.
Need to look at and analyze parking very, uh, very closely and look at the, the availability and the inventory that the village has on hand. Now with the difference in commuting and since the pandemic. How much, how much parking revenue is down? To be expected to increase, what the need is on development and parking. And see, we really have to weigh it out carefully. I'm not saying one per unit. I'm not saying two per unit. But it's something that really needs to be analyzed. You just can't say it's a horrible position. Because with the Sheldon, with the one and a quarter or one and a half onsite and the other quarter offsite. Is a revenue generator for the villagers suffering by us selling them parking permits to park in the municipal lots.
Right.
Look at it where it's a, a, uh, generating revenue for the village, but not impeding our parking.
Right.
Parking, um, for growth development. We have to come up with, um, resources or available parking to mitigate that.
Right, but that's at the launch.
We'll get nowhere if this, if we don't allow for growth and development and at the same time grow and develop parking.
I agree with you, however. I live down here and I can tell you that everyone's looking for the closest parking spot that they can get to their front door.
Yep.
So, um, I understand your concept and I believe in your concept. Because for me, that would be extra steps, right? But if it's a rainy, a cold, a snowy, whatever night. The people that are just using the example of what I see every day. I have the same six cars parked in front of my house every day. So when my mom comes over to visit, she's got to park on Charlie Street, which is the street behind me, which has barely any parking and walk to my house. They have an opportunity to park at the village lots, but people don't generally do that, especially on their food shopping day. You know, who wants to carry a case of water and dog food and, and canned goods from the municipal parking lot to their apartment? And I, and I understand that, you know, the TOD projects, I get them wholeheartedly. But we are literally in Rockland County. And Rockland County is very, very much dependent on cars.
Right.
I, I don't know how we change that and I'm not saying that we shouldn't, and we shouldn't do those kinds of projects. But I think we have to do those kinds of projects with reality at the same time.
When did Sheldon open relevant, rela- when did they, when did they start leasing?
Twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen.
Yeah.
Okay. And so. I wonder how many people, right, that took the train every day. Um. Are now not taking the train.
Well, that would be, well, right, COVID would be interesting. Because if they were working from home, you know, they may not be. So how has COVID affected their parking demand? Um, but also did they, you know, there's always this presumption that when you do TOD that everybody's going to the train station and therefore doesn't have a car, which is why they lowered the parking, you know, uh, number of units. Number of spaces per unit, but that doesn't always pan out. People might just want to live there because they want to be in Suffolk and they're not commuting anywhere.
Or they want to take the train and go to the city.
And do both and have both.
On the weekends.
And it's. Right, so they live in the city, but they still have a car.
There, there's not even a supermarket in Suffolk, you know, so like the nearest supermarkets in Ma'wa. You know, from, compared to downtown, it's almost two miles away to the Acme, I guess, you know, an hour, a mile and a half anyway. And, uh, you know, so people need a car. They can't, they can't survive without a car. So if you have two people living in a unit, even if it's a one-bedroom, they need two cars, pretty much.
Yeah, this is, this is gonna be an interesting one too, because I, I really feel that since the pandemic. Um, you know, the sharing economy and, and sort of the, uh, online, uh, you know, delivery economy has exploded. I mean, there, there's like five different delivery companies now, DoorDash. You Uber Food, you know, everybody wants to bring you food. Um, you know, everybody wants to bring you groceries. You got Peapod and, and the Shop Right At Home. Um. You really don't need to have a car, but it's.
But a lot of these services are expensive and a lot of people don't want to spend the extra money.
That's it. So I think that has a lot to do with where people are coming from. Because if you're coming from, you know, New York City and you may have been using a lot of these resources already. Um, and you're moving up here, your tolerance level for them is different than if you grew up in the suburbs. And mom and dad, you know, drove to the grocery store every weekend.
Um, and it's, it's different if it's a senior one-bedroom unit versus if it's an, it's a non-age restricted two-bedroom unit. You know, the, the amount, you know, if you have two people now living with both with cars. Um, you know, versus a one-bedroom where maybe you have some proportion that are singles, you know, with one car. But, um, it'd be good to know what the parking, or we're just thinking about surveys in general. It'd be nice to do almost like a little survey of who in that building actually works, you know, and commutes. Versus who is actually living in Suffolk and does not work in the city, you know, to get a sense of for the future. Um, you know, anticipated parking demand.
That's very, very good. Um, you could also look at the revenue, the parking revenue that the, the village generates on an annual basis. And do the comparison pre and post pandemic.
Hmm, yep, that's a good idea.
I think, did you say it dropped with the pandemic, the parking revenue?
Over sixty percent.
Wow, okay.
Yeah.
Is that, is that revenue, general revenue or is that, um, special fund revenue? Is it, is it earmarked?
Frasier.
Okay. Okay.
Um, what's the parking, just real quick, parking permits? If you're in the lots, you require a permit, you have meters. But do you have residential parking permits on the, on your roads like they do in Nyack?
Yeah, we don't have meters.
I think you have meters downstairs. Oh, no, you don't have meters downstairs, right?
Parking on the street. It's free parking on the street, then there's different levels of parking in the lot. So there's daily parking, monthly parking, overnight parking and annual parking and they're all, uh, different fees.
For the lots.
Yeah.
Right, right. And there's no residential parking permit program for the, for the neighborhoods around the downtown?
No.
No.
This is ju- just, uh, to remind you, Bonnie, this is something we have, um, Osman.
Yeah.
And Russell working on, uh, to put together some recommendations on the whole parking plan, parking program.
And it's not just, um, you know, my street, um, back in the day prior to COVID. What we call the neighborhood of the West Ward had very similar issues with parking. Because they're literally on the side of the train station. So they don't even have to walk down the stairs, go underneath Orange Avenue to come up to the train station. They're, they're smack in front of the train station.
Right.
They were inundated as well.
So that people park on those streets that are going to the train station?
Absolutely.
Wow, I never considered that.
Friday, and on Friday, they park, they take their suitcases out and go to the city for their three-day or their two-day weekend. I wouldn't mind so much if they were spending all their money in the village.
Right.
Right.
Okay, and if they're, if they're parking over there, they're not even getting a newspaper.
Not at all.
Yeah.
Do, do you, once upon a time, and I don't even know if it's still on the books, you had had a, a parking fee in lieu of. Do you have it and does anybody put into it or did you get rid of that?
I don't know anything about that one. Do you, Ed?
I'm sorry, if I could jump in, that's on, um, for a certain site plan, uh, approval.
Yep.
Yes.
It's still on the books?
I believe so. I believe it's part of the planning board process, yeah.
Okay, so do they collect any funds through that or they really end up waiving or it just doesn't get triggered that often?
Uh, it doesn't get triggered that often. When, when, when it, when applicable, they get it.
Okay.
It's just not, it just really is not, you know, it would only be on something like the Sheldon or, you know.
Okay.
You know, it occurs to me that if we, if we can locate an area where we can park the cars. Like they do this in Manhattan at Twelfth Street and around the sixty-fifth, sixty-fifth street and twelfth avenue. There's a big, big parking lot there and they provide a, a bus that runs constantly from the parking lot to Times Square, back and forth, back and forth, prac- practically twenty-four seven. If we could create a parking area and pay, arrange for a bus to go back and forth, bringing people to their car, you know, move every fifteen minutes. Uh, that would solve the whole parking problem in the future of Suffolk, if we could create such a plan.
That could be costly.
A big parking garage would solve the problem, right, in a B lot.
Well, you know, it, it's interesting because it, it may be not about, um, a new parking lot, but I mean, you know, you could always look into a loop bus. If, if people are feeling like the parking they're supposed to be using is inconvenient for them, for whatever reason.
That's the word, that's the word I'm looking for. Thanks, Mac. Max.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You could at least consider about, you know, if, if you have a loop bus that they can flag down and, and ride back to their place, that might help. But still, if they're, if they have a, a trunk full of groceries, they're looking for that on-street parking.
That's true.
So it might, it might also be about if you are going to allow these lower rates. Um, having a certain amount of, um, time-limited parking. Right, so that, you know, one hour, two-hour parking so that residents can come in, drop off their groceries. But then they ultimately have to move their car.
I think we have that now to a, to a point. I mean, in the downtown area on like Lafayette Avenue, it is time-limited.
No, I meant, I meant like with the Sheldon, right? So a certain number of their interior parking spaces that they're providing on-site. Maybe should have been time-limited to allow people to drop stuff off. I don't know, they might have that. They, they may have.
In front of the building so that they can drop off what they need to drop off and then park.
Do they have a, a doorman or a doorbell, a bell desk where they can drop stuff off?
It, it's a very nice building and I think if you were to leave your groceries there, you know.
There's somebody to watch them, yeah.
No, I don't, I don't think that you would need to have your groceries watched.
Okay.
Is it, is it time for, for metered parking? Has it been discussed? I know it's usually, um, not something that the businesses want necessarily. Um, but, you know, Nyack introduced it. Ridgewood has it. They have the meter boxes where you have to go get a, you know, a little ticket and then put in your car. So I, I just don't know sort of to what extent that the, the village has contemplated it plus, you know, parking permits. Has it, has it been sort of on your horizon to, to think about that specifically?
Well, it was thought about, we do have, we do utilize pop mobile. I don't know if you're familiar with that.
Uh-huh. Yeah.
Go buy the phone. Um, we don't use it on the streets. We use it in the lots. So in order to police the streets, we have a parking attendant. Um, we monitor the parking on a two-hour basis. But moving to meters, I know everyone likes the free, so-called free parking
Right.
On the streets in the central business district.
But if you're, if you're enforcing the time, that's really, from a planning perspective, probably the most important element of metered parking.
Right. Because otherwise, if you don't have the turnover, you're, you know, again, parking's being dedicated for extended time periods to someone who might just be working there and it's not opening it up, you know, for the businesses where there's turnover.
It's time-limited and there is a parking attendant monitoring that, striping the tires, whatever.
And that's on a regular basis or is it sort of a spot check kind of a deal?
Regular.
Regular, okay, okay. Thank you.
All right. Well, I, I think that's, that's all that I had on my agenda, uh, for today. Uh, is there any questions you have of us or additional items you feel like we should have before we start out on this process?
I look forward, I look forward to your, you know, when you get to demographics and all that, the, uh, the cooperation of the assessor that you tell us a lot about what you learned about Suffolk.
Yeah, and, and we were actually talking about, um, the assessment records. Usually we use the assessment records mostly for identifying land use. But I was talking to, um, a principal planner here in the office that worked with me on the Haverstraw Plan. And reminded me that, you know, those assessor codes aren't very good for identifying downtown land use. And there's gonna be a large work effort, um, to identify land use in the downtown anyway. And there's gonna be a large work effort um to identify land use in the downtown anyway. Uh, so we'll probably get started on that um while we're trying to work through the assessment. Because, I mean, assessment records are good for telling if, if something's a two family or a three family, although even there, there's some limitations.
Um, well, that, that's good, that's good to know as far as if you're supposed to be single family. And you're driving around and see a lot of double meters, triple meters, you know. Are there, you know, more occupancy than, you know, the zoning allows? Or, you know, are people converting, sort of what's happening in some of the residential neighborhoods? But you're right, Max, as far as the buildings in the downtown, they're multiple use, multiple tenants.
And that's not reflected, yeah.
Yeah, and the code will just say, right, the code will just say downtown, uh, row style building. As opposed to outside of the downtown, it'll say single family, two family. And then you start to see, you know, again, by doing a field survey at the same time. Is it in fact really single two, you know, what kind of patterns are we seeing in those neighborhoods? And communicating with you all, of course.
How, how long have you had your rental registry now? That, that didn't come through, Mayor.
He said years, he's not. Yeah, how long?
You, do you find that's um effective, or are there a lot of violations of that?
I would say that's a good question to ask the building department.
Okay.
Yeah, there's some issues.
A lot of discussion and issues with it, so that would. Always done.
Yeah, it needs to be, uh, there, there's, there's issues with the um. What's the word I'm looking for, not implementation, but yeah, there, there, it needs to be worked on.
Okay.
Um, so how far is your net gonna encompass the downtown village, Max, Bonnie?
The, what do you mean by the net?
So like when are we, like what, how far out of Lafayette are you guys going to look at?
So, so we're gonna do a land use, all of our mapping and data will be to the corporate boundaries.
The entire village.
The entire village, if you pay taxes to the villages suffering, that land is gonna be included in the mapping.
Oh.
However, there's an area of the village that's going to merit, um, I'll bring up the map. That Scott.
We know the downtown is the focus, but as part of the comprehensive plan, we look at the entire village. So we do the land use mapping of the entire village, then we compare it to the zoning um to see how well they're aligned.
So this is a work in progress, but generally this heavy black dotted line is the corporate boundary. So that is the, you know, incorporated village of suffering.
Mm-hmm.
And then this inset is probably a good guide to the area where we're going to have to do. A little more walking land use because the information we ultimately get from the assessor is not gonna be good enough. Um, to identify land use, and that's really the mixed use downtown, so Lafayette Avenue. Um, maybe, you know, root, root, um. Is it, is it two oh two still? Yeah, it's two oh two.
Yeah.
Orange, orange avenue, um. And then probably even, you know, Route two oh two going, um. Is, is that Orange Avenue where it, it makes the right by, um, where Mugs used to be?
Yeah.
So it's Orange Avenue hooks up towards um.
Hillburn.
On two oh two.
Yeah, doesn't it become Wayne Avenue?
No, you're right.
No, no, only if you make a right.
Okay, so you're talking about, you're, I thought you were talking about going toward Montebello.
Two oh two goes from Orange Avenue to Wayne Avenue.
Right.
And Route fifty nine.
Fifty nine.
Goes to Orange Avenue to. Yeah. Okay. Um, yeah, so we'll probably do Wayne Avenue too. Um, Chestnut, all, you know, the, the area that you are considering downtown.
Mostly the DB, the general business district and the central business district is what you're highlighting now.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Exactly.
Accomplishing plan for higher village.
Yeah, and there'll be recommendations, important recommendations and policies for both. So you're gonna have um recommendations that will deal with stabilizing and or preserving neighborhood character. For some of the more suburban areas of the village, I, I say suburban loosely. Cause I mean, we're talking about most of the village, I think, is quarter acre lots and is, you know, in my mind is urban. But again, this is the, the verbiage we use, um.
A, a lot of the village is actually one sixth acre lots, like my house is on a sixth of an acre.
Okay, yeah, it's a perfect example. So I think, I think most people. Um, you know, that, that's a village lot, that's a village density, and maybe that's what we should say instead of urban, sort of village density.
Um, I think, I think we, we didn't really touch upon it, but another big stakeholder is the hospital. Um.
Oh, yeah.
And, and do they have any long-term plans? Because um certainly in Ridgewood, New Jersey, um, they had major. Uh, plans to construct, in fact, I think some of their resources they ended up putting in Paramus. Because they just, they're surrounded by residential neighborhoods, and so I think it's the same thing here, you know. They obviously were able to accommodate the addition um that they built a while back. Um, you know, the office building, but with healthcare the way it is right now, which is really exploding. You know, what is the demand for space and, you know, are they, are they out of space? Again, do they have long-term plans, but they're definitely someone that we should reach out to.
Yeah, when you look at this map, identify this donut hole sort of of. You have Novartis, you have the quarry, you have the Salvation Army.
Yep.
Good Sam. And, and they, this area in particular, right, is, is something that um. Would be outside of the downtown, I think, of prime concern to the plan. Is what happens in these areas. So I have, I know since we've worked in, in um Montebello. That there have been some concepts for Novartis. Has uh any of that been presented to the village board?
Yeah.
One thing, one thing.
One thing, uh, uh, residential community?
No.
No.
Okay. That's probably another stakeholder we need to, to reach out to, to sort of understand.
Those are the, the large land holdings, you know, we were referring to. That could, that could, their, their development could really change, you know, traffic patterns and. And things that are happening within the community. What was, when you said there was one thing, what was the one thing they presented to the village board? Front of artists, did you say one thing?
I, I recall seeing plans a, a while ago at a meeting uh involving a, a ware, like some sort of warehouse uh transfer thing.
Distribution?
Distribution, it was something.
Yes.
Okay.
So that's in the works, we have uh, that shareholder would be willing to speak to you. Um, the potential for the sale of the quarry. Um, there's another potential site for redevelopment into a commercial, um. No residential, going back to the hospital. Well, recently, maybe about two or three years ago, purchased a, a two acre swath of land. And they did wanna move forward with additional um either parking or development on that piece, a joint.
Yeah, I think, I think the uh developer for Novartis is planning on coming in in uh January, or going to the. Uh, starting the process in January, so that's, you know.
Was that somebody looking to make um cardboard clamshells?
Cardboard what?
The one that we saw in, in Montebello was somebody who manufactures, like, you know, when you go to McDonald's and you get the cardboard.
Oh.
Clamshells?
I don't.
Yeah. That.
I don't, I don't think so.
Oh, okay.
I think it's, I think it's uh as Steve indicated, like a, a large uh warehouse slash distribution type user.
Yeah, okay, and, and interestingly.
Is it ala, ala Amazon types?
Yes, but not Amazon.
Correct.
Amazon, but not Amazon. Okay.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know if it's, you know, many users, or, you know, I think certainly, obviously, the proximity of the throughway and, you know, um. The way, a, as you, you know, as all of us, I guess, have learned uh lately, and you, as you guys know, uh. I, I forget what they call it, where you go from one distribution to the center to the next, and it's breaking it down more and more, you know. I don't know if anybody's gonna walk from there into suffering to deliver stuff, but, you know, I, I imagine it's gonna be like Sprinter van and stuff from there out, you know.
Okay. The, the um.
Here's, and Rob, what is that piece of property for, Novartis or the quarry?
Uh, Novartis.
Okay.
I really can't imagine how much they can do on the quarry site. I mean, like how much surrounding land around it, because basically it's just a big pit at this point, and.
A lot of bedrock.
Yeah, and, and filled up with water, you know, once he's, yeah. I don't know where the development would occur.
I mean, those, those are some, some items that, that sort of bring up.
I'm gonna mute again for.
With, with regard to, to the quarry, right now their access is, is out to Lafayette Avenue.
Right.
Unless, you know, when you have Novartis before you, you figure out. How to get them to give you the access down to that site, which, which may be something.
Ed, what was the information that you learned about the quarry?
I just, what?
You said that they were looking to do something up there now.
Well, they, both, both, both locations are currently providing proposals to do distribution. There are other acts points also to the quarry other than. Currently working on through the town of Ramapo.
Well, it also looks like. Yeah, it looks like they could connect to old, I, I was gonna say Old Mill Road, it looks like they could get back there. And I just don't have a topo map. I don't know how much of it's flat and how much of it's workable.
We have to probably, can you build additional road?
I'm sorry, I'm having a hard time hearing you, Ed. Is anybody else, or is it just me?
I don't hear Ed.
I'm having a hard time.
It, it's only because I think you, you're a little bit uh too far.
Far away.
Yeah.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes.
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 It's amazing, when he starts to talk, he can't hear you, sorry, Ed.
It's my voice, my voice is going.
Voice is going, that's what he's trying to say, his voice.
Alright, so can you repeat what he was saying for him? Lisa Anne, sorry.
I'll be the translator.
Well, if he has a sore throat, he certainly shouldn't be trying to holler.
Working on.
They're working on access to the quarry via Old Mill Road.
Okay.
With the New York State Throughway Authority and the town of Ramapo.
Oh, like a slip ramp.
Yeah.
That's interesting.
Which.
That, that means it's gonna be a really big, for them to open up.
And that had been looked at years ago, when crap and Z was getting rebuilt. And they wanted to do a park and ride up there?
Uh-huh.
You remember that?
I do, yeah.
Okay, so the park and ride was supposed to be up there. And they, the throughway said absolutely no at that point in time. Um, because it was too much to blast, and also that property was so sort of, I mean, this is back then.
Right.
Um, that, that property was not in, the integrity, they were a little bit concerned about blasting. Because of the big hole with all the water.
It is a very large hole with a lot of water. But you know what, they're, they're probably trying to get from Old Mill.
Right.
To align it with Donegan.
Right.
Right, in, in Montebello.
And then they dug right into the throughway, yeah.
Right out to the throughway, that's probably the big plan, and they may need to use DOT. Um, possibly right away, um, throughway right away, actually.
And Donegan's already zoned for that. Dress Barn, Dress Barn hopped out, there's a bunch of empty warehouses over there.
Right, so that they don't have to come out onto fifty-nine, because they don't want anybody going through that intersection.
Dress Barn is, is uh, a lot of it is Raymore and Flanagan.
Oh, did they pick it up?
Yeah, I would say almost half of it's Raymore and Flanagan. And the, the Montebello comp plan. For the Montebello portion of Novartis requires access. Um, via Donegan. For uh truck traffic, it doesn't allow um truck traffic to go out to Hemian, Montebello, or um. Route fifty-nine, at least that's the idea.
So Old Mill Road, Old Mill Road is a town road.
Can you hear that? Old Mill is a town road?
We got that.
Yes.
I mean, Hemian Road is a town road. So. County road, excuse me, that, that wouldn't qualify to Montebello regulating the truck traffic on Hemian.
No, it's, it's about whether or not a warehouse and distribution is permitted on the site, not about. Montebello can't control where the trucks go, but they can control what they can build.
Right, so in the plan, the building would be all on the suffering. Montebello site.
Got it, got it.
Exactly, just so you know.
Okay.
Oh, so it's one large site that incorporates the Novartis and the quarry site? No, okay.
Sorry, no.
Different proposals.
Okay, alright.
Connecting it by different owners.
Okay.
Other site, the Novartis site, the entire site lies within the village of suffering and the village of Montebello.
Right.
So the building, the proposal will, the building itself will be on village, village of suffering. Land, not in Montebello.
So it's all zoning.
All is owning, correct.
Okay.
Got it.
Right, but that's not to say with, with how they're tying the quarry in.
Quarry into Old Mill Road.
No, I under, I understand that. But what the plans are for what they want to do for the quarry, it's to, it's two different applicants looking to do. A combined venture.
No, 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 not combined. It's just a similar, it's just a similar type of, yeah, similar use.
I see, okay.
Yeah.
I got you, thank you, Lisa Anne.
Any other proposals we should be aware of?
Yeah, surprise.
Any of the, any other big proposals?
Well, did, did we discuss the Avon proposal?
No, we, we haven't yet discussed the Avon proposal.
Is that uh to convert it?
Uh, no, across the street from Avon is, uh, Avon owns another piece called, what, what's commonly referred to as the Nail Enamel Building.
Okay.
And, so there's a proposal for a, a TOD. Uh, type development on there, there's plans and everything, I could send you a, a copy of the petition.
Oh, yeah, that'd be useful.
Yeah, we've started the process on it, and uh the planning board actually took a, a quick look and uh suggested that. Uh, you know, you guys uh. Take a peek and, and see what you think, and in terms of the comp plan, but. Um, I believe uh John Lang has uh looked at it and provided a, a report as well.
John Lang is, is the planner that consults with the planning board?
Yes.
I will have to reach out to him and say hello.
Yeah, right, I was like, yeah, obviously, no, yeah, he's, you know, I wanna say semi-retired, but he's uh, he comes once in a while, he's in the.
Yeah, we, we work with John um a lot, so.
And, and right now, what is the occupancy status of the Avon's main building? And and right now, what is the occupancy status of the Avon's main building? Do we know if they're fully occupied, if they're contemplating changes of use, no?
They're fully occupied.
They're probably, oh, I'm sorry, Ken.
No, go ahead, Joe.
Nope, I'm good.
There was, um, I mean, Ed, maybe you could describe it best. They they came to the village a few years ago because. Uh, they sold, right, to um, I forget the entity's name now. What's the new name?
Notora.
No, 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 no. Um, so, you know, we're not sure they're they're in the, they're at the tail end of a pilot agreement. That's about twenty something years old, twenty five years old. So, you know. We're not sure what the future holds for that. But, you know, they're, right now, they're there, they're operating out of there.
Okay. So that in long term, again, within the context of a comprehensive plan, that's ten years, fifteen years. Vision, that's one we have to think about with the long term. Viability is and and if for whatever reason it's no longer an office, what other uses could happen there?
And when you say the across the street, you mean across Washington Street or Washington Ave?
Correct, yeah, across uh Washington, right, uh next to the rec center, community, right?
Okay.
Was it mentioned about the building on Lafayette Avenue? That we are considering uh allowing to be built? Did we mention that?
What?
That's what we're talking about now.
I don't, I'm not talking about, you know, the Avon, you know, enamel building.
I I think Fred's talking about the one next to uh, next to the uh coffee place.
Next to Java Love.
Java Love.
Yeah. The 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 board is considering a five-story building of multi-apartment.
I thought.
I think that's kind of not really proceeding right now.
So where the cleaners are? There were cleaners there?
Right across the street from there, in between Java Love, which used to be a bank. And where the uh pre the Indian restaurant is, there's that small parking lot.
Yep, yep.
Okay, yeah.
Okay, I thought you meant across the street, meaning there's those like small little one-story buildings. Um, the Mexican place.
Right.
The corner place.
Well, if you know, you know, if you know Chestnut, where it goes to the post office.
Yep.
It's it's to the west side of of Chestnut.
Yeah, I know, I know where the, I know, you're talking about actually where the the Indian restaurant is and its parking lot.
Yes, exactly.
Would it incorporate Chavalov and the parking lot and the building, or it's just the parking lot and then?
The property. Be in the parking lot.
Okay. And would they incorporate the Indian, the Indian restaurant building too?
No.
Okay.
So. It's just the parking lot there. I don't know if you can hear me. Can you hear me?
Yep.
We hear you, Ed.
It's just a parking light there, that that's a a prime spot to be developed, that you should look at, any vacant also. Um, on. Look at um. The Java Love and then going east of there where the old bank was, which is still there. The old Marine Midland.
Yes.
Other place ripe for development and then diagonal where the cleaners were, as you were mentioning, is another great potential to develop.
Yeah, I mean, you're basically pointing all out the one-story properties. You know, like the the parking lots and the old marine bank is that, it's where that little plaza is with the. With the trees, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Yes.
So the building itself is one story and then if you go catty corner where the cleaners used to be, you know, that's all one story too with the old diner there, right?
Yeah, the carrot.
Yep. So, yeah, those are all, I guess, you know, people want to now pop up the buildings. There's a market.
Just in that one spot, I don't know what the cleaners or the bank is looking to do.
And that's, that's uh, that's something we dealt with in in Monroe Village, actually, is about how. What what the one-story buildings do to the built environment of a downtown, right? It's sort of a a gap in the structure, so if you have. You have that gorgeous building on the corner there of Lafayette where uh Ole Ole, is it still Ole Ole? I know, I know he sold it. No.
Yeah, it's agave, yeah.
Agave, um, you know, that that building is is a great. Um, architectural sort of, you know, beginning to downtown and you go down. So many nice Italianate uh commercial buildings. And then it does sort of. Go down to one story with, you know, false parapets and and sort of. You know, I think I think of them as like sixties and seventies infill buildings.
Right, and they pick back up once you cross the street.
Yeah, and and the Booker Building. Um, I really like, I mean, I.
Yeah, he did a gorgeous job, didn't he?
Yeah, it it's a real good example of how you can have a building fit into downtown without. Being a facsimile, right? It's not exactly like an old building. It looks modern, it looks clean. But it fits in so well with everything around it, so.
Well, they they did a nice job on the architecture. They made it fit into a downtown with the windows. They have their, you know, half the battle with the downtown is the window scale at the ground level. And, you know, not making them small, having visual interest. Um, and and the upper levels too, and it's a four-story building. So it's, you know, the ones around it are, you know, two. Now it is definitely bigger. Um, but I think that was the whole point about scale, you know, do you, do you want to go to four-story? Do you want to go to two-story? Do you want to be three-story? There's a big difference. In what it, what these, what the downtown will look like. Based on scale, and imagine if all these buildings are the height of the Booker Building at four.
That's a lot.
You know, and the Sheldon, I think, is five, if you.
Yeah, but it goes downhill.
One, two, three, four, actually, six. One, two, three, four, five, six. On the um, depending on where, right, depending on which road you're on. So.
This, this to me just shows like how well it mirrors sort of the Heinz Playhouse. Um. Building, like.
You're talking about the Booker Building, Max?
This, this, can you see my screen?
Yeah.
Oh.
Yeah, that's the Booker Building.
This is the Booker Building, this is the the Heinz, I think it's called the Heinz Playhouse.
It is.
And and growing up, this this had the worst uh paneling, remember? It was this beautiful building, but they had like this metal steel paneling on it for the longest time.
Um, you sure that's where it was?
I, I think so.
It was, they had um old windows and they kind of um closed them up with the brick. And behind that brick, because they tried to do the facade program in that building. And behind that brick were absolutely exquisite old windows.
Oh, back up here?
Yeah.
Yeah. I thought it was like a gym or something for a while.
It was a gym.
Yep.
Yeah, I thought there was like a gym or something up there.
Yeah, and then they did yoga up there and now they do a comedy club up there, so it's been repurposed.
Okay.
You know, but uh, yeah, so. The behind that ugly brick are gorgeous windows that are obviously no longer there because they don't make sense in today's day, obviously. Um, so.
At one point, wasn't all of this covered, though? Or am I imagining that? I almost feel like the whole facade was wrapped either in vinyl or steel.
I don't.
That's like, that's like me imagining uh downtown uh meters. Even though I'm there all the time.
But I only moved in in ninety-four, so I don't remember that.
Okay. There's, there's probably not enough Wayback in my Wayback machine here. Yeah, I can only go back to to twenty oh eight.
Keep in mind with the Booker Building. Same developer had a proposal before the board. For that lot next to Java, so there is interest. developing here in the Village of Suffering.
Well, and this.
The building has. Proven track record. As you can see, what was there or what was not there.
Yeah, the gap.
Well, I remember. I, the, you know, the beauty of that is that it is, it is up against the, the the central parking lot. And so as we go outward in the downtown, we're gonna have to figure out where to accommodate parking. You know, if you're close in, then they can get to that lot. But going up two, three, four stories obviously is gonna generate more parking demand and.
There was a lot of units in that, in the uh plan that was presented to us.
And I, and I think.
I just wanted to jump in, sorry, Bonnie, there was.
Yeah, go ahead.
Further, uh, I guess it's north or east on Washington. Uh, there's the plan that received final site plan approval not too long ago. Uh, for apartments, not TOD, just apartments. Um, I'll send you, I I just. Uh, brought a copy up, um, so I'll send you guys a copy of that as well. Um. I'm forgetting.
Where was that?
Say again.
Where it is? Where was that gonna be located?
Uh, further on Washington, uh, if you leave it where you are now, uh, uh, up by, uh, I'm sorry.
Down in the firehouse.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Across from the firehouse?
No, further.
No, same side, uh, further up, further up.
Okay.
Pleasant.
Over, yeah, it's it's over there, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. So I'll send you that now as well.
It includes both of these or?
No.
No.
Just this.
Uh, part of Pleasant, right, Ed? Didn't it?
Yeah, backed up to Pleasant.
Yeah.
So Crescent, right, Crescent is no longer, right?
Right, the Pleasant Pleasant will no longer go out there. I'll uh, I'll send it to you now at the site plan.
Oh, okay. Yeah, that'll be good.
Yeah. However, I I think the important thing is going to be how do you accommodate parking, because you don't necessarily want it to be. Necessarily want it to be onsite. Because you break up, you start to have alleys, you start have to have parking areas and you break up. You know, the the continuity. So it has to be done in the right way. If you're going to be adding these buildings, sort of where do you put the parking? Um, or you could have a liner space in the front and have the parking behind, but then again, you need to be able to accommodate a driveway. And it's not the best thing to have driveways coming off of um Lafayette, that's for sure, because of the pedestrian environment. So all of these have to, you know, kind of be looked at and part of it's maybe having standards of of what. Can be redeveloped and where the parking has to go, given the overall objectives of not to break up Lafayette, you know. Um, maybe that is when it does make sense to put it elsewhere, or it may not make sense to go to the density they want.
Oh, my gosh, I forgot what it looked like. Oh, my goodness. Wow, I forgot what it's like.
Oh, where are you, Max?
The Sheldon.
Yeah, he's.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I was looking at that. Are you on Google Earth?
Yep.
Oh, wow.
And then wasn't there the Mountain Brewery?
Yes.
Oh, that's further down.
The building. Is that there still or?
Down a little further. No, that's part of the Sheldon as well.
That's what I thought. I remember that was the one they were gonna tear down for sure, and that was the boarding house.
Yep, that's exactly what it was. I actually took bricks, I had asked the uh. Con, the the Goldstein family, I said, can I go in and grab some bricks? From, from, from the original building, they're like, oh, you're a lunatic, yeah.
Yep.
Or anything else?
I, I think.
For now.
Yeah, I think that's, you know, it's, it's really given us a lot of great context. Um, the last item uh was when we're gonna meet next, um. And I think we're talking about. That's, that's the other part of suffering.
Yeah.
That's the quarry.
Here we go. There we go, uh, yeah, so that the next thing we just have to discuss is is when we're meeting next and. I think we said the third week of, third Monday in December would be December twentieth. Does that work for everybody? Couple days before the holidays.
Well, it does work for me.
I can make it work.
Okay.
Put in my calendar now.
Does it not work for anybody? Okay, so.
December twentieth.
We will make it the twentieth, uh, and we will have some reports and mapping coming your way. Um, we'll do some work on the uh, the logo branding. Uh, we hope you'll, you know, put some ideas to paper on the logo branding, um. And uh. And we'll get started in December. This would be exciting.
Excellent.
All right, well, thank you all for your time. It's been very helpful.
You're very welcome.
And I will try to get as much as I can uh as soon as I can get it.
I appreciate it, Lisa Anne.
Everyone have a great Thanksgiving.
Yes.
Thank you, you too.
We'll be reaching out to get information.
Uh, motion to close?
Ed, feel better.
I move, okay.
Second.
Second.
Okay.
Okay, motion to close, agreed.
Alright. Thank you.
See you soon again. Bye-bye.
Have a good holiday.